The mayor and city council meeting scheduled for Monday, the 12th of October, is moved to Wednesday, October the 14th. Due to the Columbus Day holiday, the mayor and city council meeting scheduled for Monday, October the 26th, is moved to Wednesday, October the 28th, due to the Maryland Municipal League Fall Conference. At this time, we'll take ordinance number 1853, an ordinance to approve the revitalization overlay area. Number one conceptual site plan for the Hawthorne Place Development with conditions and providing effective date. Ms. Pulli? Oh, you don't look like Ms. Pulli at all.
No, Ms. Pulli is at home. What is before you is the Hawth-
For the record, it's Mr. Brock.
Thanks, sir. For the record, this is Hawthorne Place Development. Ordinance number 1423 revitalization overlay application number RO1-1-07 was approved November 7th, 2007 with conditions. A record plant for the subdivision of Hawthorne Place was approved on April 8th, 2008. A final site and landscape plan for revitalization overlay Phase One with conditions was approved on May 13th, 2008. Approval of the Hawthorne Place overlay expired because they did not commence construction within the five-year period that's required by the Land Development Code. The applicant has refiled a concept redevelopment overlay application. It is proposed as ordinance 1853, which utilizes the overlay requirements of the code. It is a three-phased mixed-use development that includes multifamily residential units, office units, ancillary commercial, retail, onsite parking, and community amenities. This is essentially the same layout as was before you before that was approved. The applicant is here if you wish to look at the overlay.
Thank you. Do I have any questions to Mr. Brock first? You got the floor, sir? Your name and address and your...
Thank you, Mr. Council President, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is William Ship. I'm with the Law Office of O'Malley, Miles, Nyland, and Gilmore, located just up the street here in Albert. We're very happy to be here before this council to talk about the reintroduction and hopefully reappraisal of the Hawthorne Place proposal. As Mr. Brock summarized, the original plan did expire. With the economy, things got caught up. We have an owner involved now who is prepared to move forward. Their financing is very close to being in place, and they anticipate being able to move this project forward with the first phase in the second quarter of next year.
Excuse me, first phase when?
Second quarter of next year in terms of construction.
Thank you.
We have to get through permits, we have to get through this process, but that's... we're eager to go, and we expect the financing to come into place simultaneously with this review. And we look forward to working with the city to make things go as smoothly as possible and to address any concerns you might have. I do have a PowerPoint, which is based on the original PowerPoint, for those who saw it years ago. I do want to say, before I start going through it, that in approaching this project for the reintroduction... I may need instruction on this thing.
Three o'clock, sir.
Gotcha. So, thank you. When we looked at this, we wanted to stick as close to the original approval as possible so that there would be no surprises for the city in terms of the evaluation that was done before, and that's not just questions about architecture and amenities, but also in terms of impacts on public facilities. I would say at the outset, the one difference in terms of density, the original project was approved for 1,006 units. As you know, in the intervening period, the city has adopted an affordable housing ordinance, and we have added the 6% requirement into our approval request, which would bring our total up to 1,071. So the market rate units are the same, but we would propose to comply with the city's ordinance on affordable housing by incorporating it into the project. Am I pointing the right direction? Once you get me started, I'll be okay.
Okay.
Is that one? Ah, hold it up higher, huh? Okay.
I'll open my way.
Now, works perfectly.
You want to do the next slide, Jim?
Yeah, you want me to just say next slide?
Next slide.
Thank you for helping me out with my technology challenges. Of course, you know where the site is, but for marketing purposes, this slide was put together to show the ideal location of this site and within concentric rings going out just how centrally located the property is. It's within your primary redevelopment district. It's an existing site that is vacant, it's an old warehouse distribution type use that we would hope to convert to a living community within this revitalization overlay. Next slide, please. So, again, the RO1 zone is designed to create a more downtown livable type community within the city, and this is just pointing out to everybody where the site is again in red and how it fits into some of the fabric of the RO1 overlay that is coming forward. Next slide. I'm going to try to go through these pretty quickly so I don't keep you too long, and we save time for questions. We're trying to integrate into the direction of some of the revitalization that's going on in the corridor. We're promoting pedestrian connections within our site and to the adjoining streets. We have vehicular traffic that has a number of circulation routes that we've studied closely. We do have our traffic engineer here today, we have our architect here and our engineer here, as well as the client, to give you any further details should we need to get into that. The next slide. The RO1 zone, you know, we are readapting existing land use that is totally impervious at this point and creating a new community that will provide a urban-type density, not too dense for the roads to handle. Will include some green space and amenity space for this community, and it's close to surrounding parks and recreation, and is in keeping with your stated desire to have mixed use within the RO1. Next slide just shows some of the things that are going on in the area, which of course you know about, but these are the things that we look at when we're going out to people and showing them what a great site this is. When we came before you the first time, the drawings on the town center were conceptual. Now we substituted them real drawings, because obviously you know it's up and running, it's a great project. We had dinner there tonight before we came over here, and we think that's a big boost to getting this project started as well. Next slide shows location again. You can see how it fits into your corridor around Route 1 area. And the next slide gives you a more closer aerial view of the existing site. Again, you can see it's virtually 100% impervious, and we would be looking to adaptively reuse it and improve it's, not only its aesthetic appearance, but its environmental contribution to the area as well. The conceptual site plan, now we start to get into more specific information on the next slide. This layout of the buildings and the relationship between the phases is virtually identical to the prior approval. We did not want to change that. So you have in Phase One, Buildings B, C, and D, which line up along Stagger's Road. That's where we'll be starting with the first phase and working continuously to build that out. We would probably be starting over at Building D, as in David, and we would work our way back to Marshall Street. The second phase is in the back, it's Buildings E and F, and then G and H are reserved for the final phase. Now, some of that phasing in the second and third phase may alter depending on the market situation, and we would come back to the city and update you as to what we're hearing. The parking is podium parking for B, C, and D, which means there's a ground-level parking underneath the buildings for the whole expanse of that block. The parking for Buildings E through G and Building A, which is an office building, is podium parking underneath Buildings EF and G, and then a parking structure which you see behind Buildings F and G there. That parking would be shared by the phases in the back. We would, with each successive site plan for individual buildings, come back to you and show you how we're meeting the parking requirement for each building, as we might build a parking deck in a section or a podium in a section, but we would verify that we have enough parking for each phase. The first phase, I should state, B, C, and D, is wholly parked under the podium with sufficient parking for that phase. It's standalone. We don't need any of the parking in the back for the first phase. We actually exceed the required amount of parking by about 20 spaces. The one thing I do want to point out on this slide that I think was kind of important in terms of some of the discussion that went on the first time, which was the amenities and the recreational opportunities for the residents. You may recall that the swimming pool facility was going to be in the second phase with one of those Buildings F or G, probably on the building. We've moved that up to Phase One. We wanted to have a more prominent and useful recreational opportunity for the residents in the first phase, and so you can see now the pool there in blue somewhere kind of wrapped around by Building B.
Looks like a baby pool.
It's just the scale, Mr. Mayor. It's a full-size pool.
Check it.
I appreciate the question. On the next slide, again, the vision for the project. You can see a conceptual drawing, which is the identical drawing as before. We have not really changed the concept of the massing. It is 1,071 units, as we've mentioned. That's the 1,006 plus the 6%. Actually, if you back it down, if you take 1,071 times 6%, you end up at 1,006 market rate, and we worked that through with your staff when we were preparing our request, so that we were on the same page, hopefully, on that. We have, within the project, we have green spaces that'll be built on top of these podiums. We have sidewalks and connections. We have courtyards within the buildings that will create recreational and open space living areas for the tenants as well. And then we're still maintaining sustainable features within the project in terms of the construction of a white reflective roof, low-emitting materials in the paint and other materials, controlling our stormwater runoff, probably improving it from what it is existing condition. I see a nod from my engineer, as we'll be complying with current standards. This was an old site that predated current code. And then other materials you see there that are generally affiliated with sustainable practices. I will point out that we have taken off Zip Cars on the program. Doesn't mean we won't necessarily have an opportunity for Zip Cars, but frankly, I think in the market Zip Cars have kind of been supplanted by services such as Uber and other technology-driven opportunities. So, other than that, the sustainable features is the same. We still have the required number of parking for the project as well. Next slide is just some rendering viewpoints from different areas on the property. You can see the first one is a view from standing at Marshall Avenue, and the bottom one is if you're at Route 1, you can see the buildings in the background. That's at full build-out, of course. And then the next slide shows you what it would look interior to the site in this main road and some of the green space and kind of plaza-type meeting areas that folks would be able to enjoy within the project. And then we have a couple slides, next slide, which show you that the type, not necessarily the exact thing, but the type of amenity space and open lobby space and that type of treatment within the project, the level of quality of the design and materials and construction that we would be offering within this. The next page is the phasing plan. I kind of talked to you... There you go. Talked to you through this, but you can see in purple is Phase One, and gold is Phase Two, and then, what do we want to call that? Coral? That's Phase Three. Now, as I said, if we got some market-driven inquiries about Building A, for example, we may come back to you and say we'd like to jump that up sooner. One thing that, you know, we're speculating, my client is anticipating and trying to go out in the market on the office market is still pretty tough. I think you've probably heard that around the county and around, I assume, in the city as well, but there may be some interest for hotel-type use, and if that occurs, we'll come back to you, and we'll update you, and we'll, of course, do the traffic analysis to convert whatever use is proposed there to make it work. But I just mentioned that because the phases, at least two and three, are kind of conceptual, and as the market develops, we'll be back with more detailed site plans to show you how it's going to function and hopefully get your approval for the next phase. Within the phases, Phase One, B, C, and D, has a retail component in it still of 2,500 square feet. That's a smaller footprint of retail because frankly, the success and the activity going on with the new town center and other activity, hopefully, that's going to revitalize along Route 1. This site further back from Route 1 is going to have a harder time attracting retail. So we're still including a retail component. And then the, I would note, the 303 units for Phase One is the market rate number, so you would add, if you want us to do the affordable component in each phase, we hadn't had a chance to talk with staff about that, but we assumed you might want 6% in each phase. That would be 18 units roughly in Phase One that would be added, 303, but overall, the total number would not exceed the 1,071 that were requested. Again, we're providing 442 parking spaces in Phase One. Were required 422, I believe, or 423, so we have 19 spaces in excess for Phase One. The second and third phases similarly have sufficient parking or additional parking allowed. We don't want to overpark the site, but we don't want to underpark the site, because as you know, there's limited opportunities to park off-site in this particular area, and so we're looking at that very closely, as I'm sure the city will as well. And the last slide is just a wrap-up, just a bookend on the back. That is a very quick run-through of the PowerPoint that describes the project, of giving you some key components of the project and some comparison to the original approval. I know I went fast. I'm kind of mindful of your time and not trying to keep you too long, but we're here to answer any questions you might have and guidance that you can give us as we go forward in the next steps in the city's process, which we're eager and pleased to do.
Mr. Smalls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ship, always a pleasure to see you.
Good to see you.
I have a few questions. As I recall, part of the discussion when this project was first introduced to us had to do with the floodplain, and you didn't mention that, as I recall in your presentation. And again, I recall, I don't recall actually whether it was the entire project or the backside of the project that is in the floodplain. Could you talk to us a little bit about that?
The engineering treatment of the floodplain is exactly the same as it was before, and it does extend up towards the front, and as I described, the concept of the podium parking is that parking is allowed in the floodplain, but residences are not. And so the residences are built above the podium, which means that none of the residential units will be in what is technically classified as a floodplain. It's the exact same configuration as the original. Didn't ask for any further waiver of that.
Also, could you, you mentioned a little bit about Zip Cars, and in the slide, there was a bullet point there that said public transportation. Is that, you know, what you're offering is public transportation, or is there something else that...
No. We would like to work with your staff again. This was a discussion that we went over in the first approval. We received a letter of what I'd call a commitment of a sense from the bus system for the city that they would incorporate a bus stop within the project. Now, I have to say that that was some years ago, and I don't know what their budgetary and route information is now, but we would propose to go back and meet with them and have that same conversation and say, is this letter still good, or do you need to give us a new letter so that the city and frankly, the applicant knows that there's going to be hopefully a bus route that will come through that main road, or at least on the side streets approximate to the proper.
I'm just going to speak for myself in terms of rental units in this market, apartments and any other rental units, and as you know, and your client certainly knows, there are quite a lot of rental units in the city. And I'm just curious, in terms of your research, obviously, you wouldn't be moving forward with it if you were concerned about it, but certainly, the question has been raised by people in the community about the number of apartment units that are planned or under construction in the city. Can you just talk to us just a little bit about what goes into your deciding that rental units are viable and profitable?
Yeah, and certainly, there was a lot of investigation done with that with the original approval, and I would start out by saying the condo market is really not strong right now. The rental market remains strong in the multifamily sector. We see Laurel as a strong market. We have the project in phases so that buildings will be constructed as there's leasing related to those buildings before you start the next building. But I would say that the financing process has gotten very rigorous since the recession, and the lenders and reviewers of financing for this type of product require a lot of scrutiny about the market viability of the product, and so the fact that we are close to having the financing done, which is essentially at the point of, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's, shows that it's gone through a rigorous review on the private sector side to justify the market for moving forward on Phase One. So, you know, I do have my client here. If you want some comments from them tonight, I'm glad to bring them up, or if you want us to prepare some information to submit at the planning commission phase and back when it comes to you for final review, we're happy to do that.
I think that would be important for us to...
That way, we might be able to prepare something.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. And, okay, thank you. And finally, and again, I may be out here on an island by myself with this, but I'm particularly interested in if your client has a policy or a plan on minority participation. I'm particularly interested in that, not just minority, but women-owned business participation, particularly in projects of this size. Is there any policy or approach that your client uses?
Again, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, Mr. Smalls, is take that comment, and we'll have a conversation about it when we come back. You want me to bring them up now? I'm happy to do that. I would say that, you know, a lot of times, that category is discussed as local and minority participation.
Absolutely.
And we do have a couple of local firms involved already in the process, myself and Sultus is a local firm as well. But it's an important question, and let us get some information for you on that.
Perfect. Sounds good.
But if nothing else, we'd like to work with the city on making sure there's enough advertising and opportunities so that folks know what work is out there, and we've worked on other topics that way to have job opportunities and maybe, I don't know what your website capabilities are for that particular thing, but we'd be happy to work with you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Quer.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Initially, it had been discussed in the plans, some type of access to Town Center, Route 1 area, moving stairs, stairs. Is that incorporated in your plans?
I don't recall that. I mean, Town Center is some distance from here. There are some improvements that were carried forward in terms of traffic signal review that we have not changed, but I'm not aware of a special sidewalk.
We were talking about pedestrian-friendly tonight, and that's why I'm wondering, pedestrian-friendly to where?
What we've tried to do is connect to the existing road network, which includes Marshall and Stagger's, which then extends through the Bowie as well. We worked in the original approval on some pedestrian signage and warning type thing that could be installed to help that underpass situation. I know from the staff report that there's some improvements that the city has done, and we'd like to know more about that. I think there's a condition that's proposed that would essentially require this project to contribute back to some of the costs of that. We understand that. So we'd be happy to work with your staff to make sure we understand the status of those things. I don't know that, you know, we're certainly not proposing an overpass or anything of that magnitude with Route 1, but we will be working with state highways and your public works department about pedestrian connections in the corridor.
Okay. Zip Cars. I definitely, Zip Cars is a brand, so I definitely understand the Uber and other issues, but as you mentioned trends, there's also a trend towards electric cars. Have you thought about obtaining a grant for a charging station?
That's a very good point, and I'll discuss that.
Okay. And there's lots of grants out there now, so it'd be prime time. Will this change the number of floors, adding the other 60 units, or?
No.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of questions. You know, we were in here in 2007, I think, to discuss this. Things have changed more. Does the developer anticipate a higher takedown rate on the units for people that want to live, work, and want to work where they're living? I mean, I'm watching what's happening in DC. You get all these federal agencies that are decreasing floor space and sending people home, and I think that's what makes Laurel very attractive for people that want to rent a place. It's in the middle. It ain't moving. Okay? So I assume that's been considered by your marketing people and your people looking at the statistics and the demographics. I'm just going to assume that, because I think that, what I've noticed is, we just did C Street opening on the old city property, and on the day they had the grand opening, they had two vacant units. More importantly, Klingbill had bought Emerson from Archstone. They had 12 MT units. When they originally opened up, they were having trouble getting people in there. The Anderson family is redoing their whole development up in just a stone's throw from here. As soon as they can get the meters put in, the people are in the units. And again, a lot of those people, a lot of the people that used to work for me are now working at home. And I'm not talking about working at home one day a week, I'm talking about working home three or four days a week, or working at home a whole day, a whole week. So again, I think we're going to see a, I think that the takedown rate for apartments if they're centrally located personally will be a higher rate than we anticipated back down in 2007. And I know there's, as you mentioned, the financing is an issue, because you got to get the people in the units before they'll turn financing loose for the next section. I understand that. So coming back to what you said about escalating the phasing, it is possible that if you see the market is, hey, it's there, let's get these units filled, and we could accelerate both two and three. Is that correct? That's what I heard you say.
That's what we're saying. We would like to retain the flexibility to come back to you and say, guess what? We need to jump-start this building instead of that building or both buildings.
Great.
And that will depend on the success of the first phase and the absorption of the general area.
Okay. I'm not asking for any answers. I'm just, I'm giving you my thoughts. I'm just, I'm giving you my thoughts about what's happening.
We hear what you're saying.
Okay. The other thing had to do with the hotel. The other thing that I've seen happen in DC, when they couldn't sell those condos, they turned them into executive rentals, long-term executive rentals. So you've got, you're getting actually agencies renting these units a year at a time, and then they'll shuttle people in and out. So I'll ask you to think about that. If you move to that, think about that. I'm very interested in local labor. As you heard Mr. Smalls said, we're interested in, you know, minority participation. And I assume that, and I've watched some projects go on here recently in the city, and when I ask about it, they were paying prevailing rate. I'm more interested in prevailing rate, you know, that we're paying people a fair salary, no matter who's doing the job. And I'm sure you are too. Okay. The last thing, the last two things. We've got a proposal in front of the mayor and city council pending for the open mall. I don't know what's going to happen with it, but they want to do something down beyond where the high-rise is there. They're talking about some residential units. But more importantly, there is a possibility that they're probably going to have to do some reconfiguration on Route One, if I remember. Okay? I'm just thinking ahead 10 years. What I see is from somewhere between Staggers and Route One, an entrance into a walkway that goes over Route One. I'm not talking about an overpass. They're expensive. But walkways have gotten less expensive than they used to be. They bring them all prefab and put them on the piers to allow the people to get onto the open mall but to the Town Center. I just mentioned that, okay? And they carry their bikes over there. They carry their bikes. I've watched them carry bikes in the ones, you know, in DC. Okay. Last thing has to do, you've got an awful lot of white space on the roofs. I don't know what square footage is. Are you thinking about possibly solar up there to carry some of the power load for those buildings? I'll just ask that. I don't want an answer tonight. But these are things that I saw when I looked, when we saw the plans, you know, when we got our new set of plans. And again, I just mentioned that it's an awful lot of white space up there.
Okay. And the white space is really meant to indicate reflective.
Reflect. I know. It's a Leeds thing.
It's an energy-saving.
But if I remember correctly, you can, in fact, there's a trade-off if you put solar where you're going to have the reflective stuff. Because you're, it's not beating down on the building, you're collecting it, and you're doing something with it.
We hear you.
I'm not, I'm not looking for any answers, just a couple of thoughts about when I looked at this project. Thank you, Ms. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholas.
I just have one question. Can you tell me how many cars are going to be allowed per unit?
You know what we're parked at in terms of number per unit? Depends on the number of bedrooms, is what you're. 1.3 over the whole project, but that's, you know, we have some larger units and some smaller units.
If you go the way you're going right now, and everything works in your favor, what is your build-out time?
Well, the project was originally approved with about an eight-year build-out for the entire project. I don't think we've revised that phasing. But really, what we're, yeah, Phase One is two years. That's what I wanted to think of that one. So what we're ready to roll out right now is Phase One. The financing is virtually in place, and we see that as a two-year build-out.
I would like for the record. I would like for the record, since you have a lot of people here, I'd like for you to identify them and so that we can know who the principals are that we're dealing with here.
Alan and David, you want to stand up?
My name is Alan Cohen, the owner of Hawthorne Place.
Okay. Okay. You want him on the mic?
Yeah, that wouldn't be probably nice.
Alan Cohen, 5517 Pembroke Road, Bethesda, Maryland. I'm the owner since July of 2014 of Hawthorne Place.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Dave Wangle, 9258 Evans Road, Burland, Maryland, and I'm running ADC Builders, which is in-house construction.
Appreciate it.
I'll have the consultants introduce themselves. They're important. Steve, come on up.
Steve Mohall, I'm a partner with GTM Architects.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Mike Wagner. I work for Solzhe's, civil engineering firm.
Thank you.
I'm Glenn Coates, vice president of the traffic group.
Thank you, sir.
And the guy who keeps me straight.
I think we know him from past.
Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Nate Foreman, I'm an associate with Amalia Miles, Alan Gilmore.
Thanks, sir.
Frequent visitor of BJ's Micro Korea.
He's been attending a number of our meetings, so we're very familiar with him.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Before you, I've got some questions.
Okay, that's fine. No, but I mean, a lot of these questions that are in all of our minds are all relevant to the success of your project here. We here in Laurel, we don't want anything but the best for our citizens and nothing but the best for you all. And just like the charging stations and the solar panels, we really want to go green. I asked our city administrator, Kristy Mills, the other day about what Mr. Les has brought up about the rentals for executives that are going to be in the area for any extended periods of time. So we're very much interested in seeing some kind of a thought process with that. But other than that, I'll turn it over to the mayor and welcome you all to the city.
Bill, I'm going to ask, before you leave to see Lou Ann Crook, I would like to meet your client, and I'd like to discuss this project before it gets to the full council. So, okay? Let's do it quick because I've got to go out of town. So I'll make, I'm going to make myself available. Huh? If we, I've already told her, today or tomorrow, tomorrow or Friday, if we could do it, they're available. I'd like to sit down with you all.
We're happy to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Rock, anything else?
Only that it's going to be, it's scheduled to be heard by the planning commission October the 20th, and it'll be returned to you after that.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number two, the consideration of a recommendation for the renewal of the contract for the TASER Evidence.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mayor Moe, council members. Before you should have a memo dated September 22nd, reference bid recommendation for TASER/evidence.com contract renewal. As you'll recall, in early 2003, February of 2013, I'm sorry, we negotiated with TASER International in regards to our TASER Axion cameras. They provided a storage system, which was evidence.com. Evidence.com stores and manages all of our personal wear camera video, and it started again with the purchase of the first rollout of cameras. This contract expires, it was a three-year contract, it expires in February of 2016. The memo include, or the quote includes licenses for 45 units. We just recently placed another order for 12 units, which brings our total complement to 45 units. So it'll be all-inclusive of what we will have in February of 2016. The annual cost quoted is $11,334 per year for a five-year span. It is not currently budgeted. However, alternate funding sources have been identified for this fiscal year, and we will make it a line item for next fiscal year, 2017 and beyond. Requesting a renewal of the contract with evidence.com for $11,334 per year for five years totaling $56,670.
Questions from the council. Mr. Smalls.
Hi, Mr. President.
Ms. Nicholas.
No questions.
Mr. Les.
Mine.
Ms. Querry.
Let's see, alternate sources?
We have some grant money that has come in, and we have other funding sources for the, for the covenant of this year, probably asset forfeiture.
Do they, do these have like a burnout rate from being on the charger?
The cameras, this has nothing to do with the cameras. This is strictly the storage and the maintenance of the storage, of the data. The cameras themselves, we planned on about a five-year replacement schedule. We actually are a year ahead of schedule. We are anticipating a total rollout in four years with 100% complement. We're about three years in, obviously, and we have 100. With this round of cameras that has just been purchased, we will have 100% coverage on patrol. So we will have about a two-year lag, and then we'll have to start doing a replacement of the first-rounding cameras.
But we won't do them all at once.
No, ma'am.
Gradually.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. President, if I may, just for the record, we've received a lot of phone calls and a lot of inquiries in regards to our storage capability, particularly now the redaction. Evidence.com has started a program where we can redact certain parts of the video. The system that we are currently using, the evidence.com, we have had zero issues with. There have been no problems. There has not been any problems from day one. It has been an outstanding system. A lot of the other agencies that are utilizing different camera systems, as well as different storage media, are running into a lot of problems to include interference with the radios, skipping of the video. We have not had any of those problems, and we haven't had any problems with the maintenance.
I hope I didn't cut you off in your presentation.
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the council? Okay. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Item number three, consideration of a recommendation for a contract extension for LA 16-01-ENR Services Incorporated to add the deep asphalt patching, sidewall curb, and gutter replacement. Mr. Free.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, on our, as part of our annual ongoing projects, we have identified numerous sidewall curb gutter and patches around the city that need to be replaced. And in our services, we just awarded a contract who has agreed to let us use their prices to get this accomplished. We have funding set aside in CIP for sidewall replacement and $50,000, curb and gutter of $35,000, and our GOB funds of $70,000 in the highways and street maintenance division. So we're hoping that we could extend this contract for $155,000, which would save us probably about $15,000 in mobilization fees.
Questions from the council. Mr. Smalls.
Mr. Free, I just have a sort of a general question when it comes to sidewalk patches. In situations where you have tree roots that have caused sidewalks, how do you, how do you actually deal with that? And I know in some parts of Old Town, you know, that may exist. What's the procedure for dealing with things like sections of sidewalk that have been pushed up by roots?
What we've done in the past is have the state arborists come out there and look at it and see if they'll allow us to trim the roots or if we would have to readjust a sidewalk around it so that it doesn't kill the tree. In some instances, that's recommended that we can trim certain roots, and they will come out and watch them trim them, or we'd have to adjust the sidewalk.
Okay.
Monteur Sampson's a good example of where that issue arises. But if there's a trip hazard, they take care of it.
Thank you.
Ms. Querry, do you have anything? Mr. Les.
I have no problem with this, but let me just mention, Rob, last night, we had a person that lives down at the lower end of Forest Street, she's putting in 770 square feet of concrete driveway because she keeps getting her cars hit from the church across the street. And I suggested to Sunny that she get ahold of you, and I suggested to the woman, she may be able to save some mobilization costs, just like, you know, she'd have to negotiate directly with the company, but they're already mobilized here, and those guys do it after hours. And that's a benefit, I think, to the citizens when they can save some money like that. So I don't know if Sunny talked to you today, but you might want to just reach out to Sunny tomorrow.
Yeah, she emailed me today.
Okay, excellent. Because that, you know, that woman didn't have the fogist, and she could spend a lot of money, and she was going to replace pieces of sidewalk. I didn't understand that, and I didn't ask. But that's something else you might want to ask Sunny about. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Nicholas.
No questions.
For the record, Mayor Moe is just a wealth of knowledge. Thank you all. We're adjourned.